Well, hello.
Hi there.
Hello there.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Well, and yourself?
I believe I'm well. Another beautiful day.
True, very much.
Yeah. Daryl, how are you, sir?
I'm fine. Trying to get everything together here.
Oh, man.
How about yourself?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we got a lot of things kind of apart, but some things are together, so I guess that's good.
Yeah.
You're in a different room.
I am in a different room. It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In different room, different house.
Oh, did you get a new house?
I did.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
I assume it's still in Inglewood.
Nope.
No.
No, it's no, it's not.
Where is it?
It's just just south, just a little bit in Castle Rock.
Okay. So are you no longer an Inglewoodian?
Yes, I guess I'm a Castle Rockette.
Okay. Okay.
Now, that's a picture.
Yeah, exactly. You know, I've been working on the high kicks here lately, but it just doesn't seem to be all coming together for me. Daryl, maybe you could help.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly. No problem.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, every now and then, everybody needs one of those. It's good for us.
So are you going to serve out the remainder of your term or is this your final? I mean, not the term, I guess it would be the remainder of the year.
Well, that's, yeah, that really is the $64,000 question, as they say, Daryl. And the answer to that is no. You know, by code, one has to be a resident in some fashion of the city of Inglewood in order to serve.
So you are, so this is your final appearance?
It is, unless I want to come back as a concerned citizen having purchased property elsewhere. Probably not my primary residence, so. You just never know.
What took you to Castle Rock?
Um, we just decided it was time. We had 5,200 square feet. And our, our children have grown. And they've moved out, and this is good, because this is what we all hope for at some point. And we no longer need 5,200 square feet, so we moved.
Nice.
So I can hop on my bicycle and go ride wherever I want to. With, you know, a different traffic, but not, not bad, so it's all good.
Yeah. Well, congratulations.
Well, thank you. We'll just wait till everybody gets here.
Mike, you moved?
I did. I did. We got close.
Not Inglewood. Not Inglewood? Oh, no.
Not Inglewood. Yep. Yep. So we moved to, we moved to Castle Rock, so this is, this is a good thing. So. Picked up our H-style home. Well, thank you.
Hopefully, Castle Rock thinks so, too.
Well, you know, it is, it is early, but if, if, if history has any way of coming true again, I would imagine that probably 62% of the population would think it's good. And the balance would, would be either don't like it or ambivalent, somewhere in there. So that's generally how it falls, as for 20 years.
Okay.
As long as you understand that, yeah, as long as you understand that going in, you really don't lose any sleep.
Sure. Well, you haven't been involved in the political world. You know, you don't lose any sleep trying to please everybody, because you know that's just not going to happen.
Will never happen. Will never happen. You know, I remember one time, a long time ago, I was having a glass of wine with Robert Reich and Alan Simpson, so Secretary of Labor for Bill Clinton, for President Clinton, and Senator Alan Simpson from Wyoming. And I asked him, I said, guys, you guys are like cartoon characters, you know, you, you're, you're like the sheepdog and the sheep. One goes and protects one another, and then there's the wolf comes in and, and you all kind of, to, you know, do this thing all day long, and how can we all sit down and have a glass of wine? And they just, Robert Reich just laughed, and he said, well, he says, that's, that's all part of the deal, man. He said, we're all still trying to get to the same place. So that was, that was pretty, pretty insightful on his part, so. Well, Nancy, you'll have to tell me when we have everybody.
I think we are almost there. Mr. Hagerty's having some technical issues. He said he will be joining us shortly, but I believe he is the only one, because Ms. Brown just joined.
Okay, excellent. Well, why don't we go ahead and do this in an effort to be efficient? I've always believed in efficient meetings. If you picked up on the conversation, Lori and I have moved to Castle Rock effective last Friday. We're no longer residents of Inglewood, and as such, I've tendered my resignation as the Chair of Planning and Zoning. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve with everybody, and I felt it was only fitting that I would just sort of, if you will, appear in person to tell you. And I'll tell you, of, there have been tremendous members that I've served with, and I hope things continue as, as they have. And you know, if you're pleasing everybody all the time, you're pleasing nobody, including, including who you are as a person and what you feel is right. And I think the Council has done an excellent job, and certainly the Mayor does a great job of leading. And I've now really given staff and commissions the ability to understand what their goals are, what the objectives are for the various commissions, to create a new Inglewood and hopefully a better Inglewood. And I would encourage you to ask critical questions. So if you're asked questions, oftentimes it's better to try to be, to understand before being understood. And I guess I would leave you with that. It's been an absolute pleasure to staff. Really, I've worked with a number of staffs over the years, and the staff we have today is second to none. And, you know, lots of challenges, lots of development, so I'm sure it's a full employment act. There won't be any reduction in staff anytime soon, I'm quite sure of that. Colin, welcome. So I did tender my resignation at 4:56 PM this, this evening to the Mayor, the City Council, and to staff as we report to them or work with them. And so at this point, I would encourage you, Michelle is the Vice Chair, and I would encourage you to, to accept her as the Acting Chair and take appropriate action. As a reminder, you do have a, a normal course of events would be February. So given that, there's probably five meetings between now and then, tops, unless there's some special meetings called. So with that, I want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart and wish you all the best.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Definitely miss you.
Yeah, sorry to see you go. Yeah, sorry to see you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Good luck in Castle Rock.
Thanks.
Is it because I was late to one meeting, and that's, that's, is it my fault?
Well, no, actually, you know, here's the difference between then and now, Colin. I'm having a glass of Rhambauer Chardonnay. Now, if you've ever had Chardonnay, get Rhambauer Chardonnay. I'm telling you, it's awesome. So with that, the meeting has not started yet, so nobody can say anybody was drinking at the meeting. Michelle, I'm going to turn it over to your very capable hands, and I would, I would encourage everybody, as Michelle goes through this process, it's a little bit different when you're looking at all these screens trying to see, or the little pictures trying to see who's got their hand up. So a little bit of forbearance and forgiveness. Michelle, you're going to do a great job, and everybody, what a pleasure it's been to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you again, Michael. We'll miss you.
Yeah, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Goodbye.
Okay, well, with that being said, I would like to call the meeting for Tuesday, November 17th, for the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Nancy, would you like to call the roll?
I would. Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Sure.
Mr. Hagerty?
Here.
Ms. Lipowski?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Fuller?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Ms. Townley?
Here.
Mr. Kenton?
Here.
And Acting Chair Austin?
I'm here.
Thank you.
So that being said, do we have a quorum?
You do.
Okay, terrific. Um, now, this agenda says the next item is for the public forum. Should we be approving the minutes from last time, though?
As a reminder, you will all approve those minutes via email, an email poll, because we had to send those to City Council, and we didn't have a meeting in between. And we do not have any members from the public for public comment.
Okay, so we can just move on here then to, according to my agenda, the strategic plan with Tim Dodd. He was, oh, there he is. Tim, are you ready to go?
I am. Can everyone see my screen?
I can see it, Tim.
Great.
I can, too.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam Acting Chair, for the introduction. So my name is Tim Dodd. I have worked for the city of Inglewood for just over three and a half months now. My title is Assistant to the City Manager, so it is a new position for Inglewood. It's one that does exist in several cities. I would describe my job really as a high-level project manager. While most of the departments report directly into the City Manager, most of my responsibilities are kind of managing projects that cut across departments, some that involve the community. Strategic planning is a big part of what I do. It's something that I've done in past jobs. I've been in government for about 14 years. I'm from the Boston area originally, and right before this job, I worked for the city of Santa Monica, California, where I was the Chief Performance Officer. And I apologize, I live in downtown Denver. My doors are closed, but I can hear some street noise, so I apologize if you can in the background. So I apologize if, if anything happens while I'm talking. But while I was in Santa Monica, I was the Chief Performance Officer and oversaw strategic planning, data analytics, and performance management. And so a lot of my job here is strategic planning, coordinating our strategic planning efforts, both internal and external. I oversee customer service for the city, coordinate some big projects, like a lot of our efforts related to homelessness, working to develop kind of the framework for a sustainability program, track government trends, legislative updates, and things like that, and a variety of special projects. So my purpose tonight is to present the city's strategic plan. So I just want to thank Wade, Nancy, and Brad for inviting me tonight. I think this is the second commission that I've had a chance to present to, so I greatly appreciate it. So the city's strategic plan was actually adopted right before I started with the city. So City Manager Sean Lewis and I, kind of between when I was hired and when I started the job, I think was when this was approved. So he did a great job of keeping me in the loop about what was going on. It is a three-year plan. It's a very detailed plan, so tonight I'm really just kind of going to go over some of the highlights. It's really, in a sense, two and a half years, because in 2020, it was approved right around kind of the halfway mark of the year. So we are monitoring projects in the plan for half of 2020, quarters three and four, and then for all of 2021 and 2022. So this just gives a quick overview, kind of of some things I've already discussed. But really, it's important to note that the City Council did approve this. I think there was at least one, and should be obviously the summer of 2020. I apologize for that typo. And as I mentioned, it runs for two and a half years. There was at least one City Council retreat. I think there was, were other sessions where the City Council basically developed seven, what we call, outcome areas, and I'm going to go through all seven tonight. So those are basically big buckets of things the city wants to focus on. So things like sustainability, neighborhoods, local economy, and then within those, there are several goals. And then there are several projects. There's actually about 175 projects that are in the plan for the first two quarters of implementation. And so I should say, too, this last sentence that talks about updates, we are working really hard to publish what we're calling dashboards on a quarterly basis. So the first one, actually, for quarter three of 2020, will be presented to the City Council next week. It'll go live on the city's website, probably also on Monday or Tuesday of next week. And it basically shows every single project and where we're at. Is it something that was impacted by COVID-19? Is it something that we're recommending a modification or removal? Is it something that's on track, off track, delayed, or something that we've accomplished? So one of the, actually, I'll get to it in a second. I'm just going to go ahead really quick, because I didn't want to show you this slide. So this slide actually just provides a snapshot of where we're at right now. So of the 175 projects that are in the first year of the plan, 21% have already been accomplished. And again, when that document is published, and I'm happy through Nancy, Wade, and Brad to send, send it to you, but it will also be on our website, 21% have been accomplished, 58% are on track, and then 21% are off track, impacted by COVID, or staff is recommending their modification or removal. Just to go through a few of what I call the anchors of the plan. So these organizational values did exist before the plan, but they are things that really are important. They're really kind of lenses for everything that we do, you know, whether it's hiring someone or buying tobacco. These six values really are things that are intrinsic to everything that we do as a city. These are the seven outcome areas that I mentioned. So these are the seven areas that Council chose to highlight. They are by no means inclusive, however, they do cover, I would say, the vast majority of the things the city does. There are some aspects of the work that your commission is engaged in, and community development are engaged in the touch in several of these. Neighborhoods and local economy, obviously, I would say are the areas where that work is most prevalent, but it does touch a few other areas as well, such as, I believe, transportation and sustainability. I'm sorry, I just went through that slide. So now what I'd like to do is just quickly go through a little bit about each of the sections. What you see bulleted on the right, these are what we call the goals. So within each outcome area, so something like neighborhoods, we have multiple goals, and then under these goals, there are projects. When the dashboard is published, you will see the outcomes, the goals, and all the projects, and the status update for each one. So this is an area, and if you look kind of, I'm sorry, I think it kind of has double vision there. The neighborhood statement at the bottom kind of got copied twice, but. So the statement at the bottom that's under neighborhoods and under the graphic, that's really how we define the outcome, otherwise known as the ideal state, of what we want to achieve in this area. Right now, most of our plan includes projects, meaning specific things that have a definitive beginning, middle, and end that we want to accomplish. But one thing that we're really working, starting in January, that we really want to start adding to the plan, are measurements. So now that we've done all these great things, and we've implemented many of these 175 projects, how can we measure them to know they're being successful? So we do want to add in the next year a few measurements into the plan, and really two types. Eventually, we want to measure KPIs, key performance indicators, that we're starting to measure internally first. That will basically show how well we're doing things, how well we're monitoring programs that already exist. Excuse me. And then also, we want to have what we call outcome metrics. And outcome metrics are tied to, in this case, they'd be tied to neighborhood, neighborhoods, and they'd also be tied to that statement. So they would help us measure whether or not we are working towards a city that fosters diverse, vibrant, connected, and engaged neighborhoods. Obviously, having those kinds of measures is very difficult. They take often years to develop. We do a citizen satisfaction survey every two years. We just did one. So a lot of the data points that we, that we get from that survey, we do hope that we could look at them and try to develop some metrics that would help us in a measurable way define these statements. But because we're just starting out, right now, these statements, just in a narrative form, basically identify what it is we want to do. So in the neighborhood section, what we're really trying to do is connection. We really want to make sure that we're doing what we can to make active, vibrant neighborhoods, to integrate neighborhoods, encourage diversity of people and architecture in the neighborhoods. So again, there's a lot of things in this area that definitely tie to the work that you're doing. Local economy also, and I promise I didn't put them, actually, I may have put them first on purpose. I can't remember if that was done, done by design. But this is also an area where there's a lot of work that ties quite a bit to the work of community development and TR Commission. So in local economy, we're trying to create a city that supports, retains, and attracts a diverse local economy. So there's a lot of projects in here that relate, I said Dan was on the call, so a lot of the redevelopment things that we're working on as a city fall into this area. A lot of the things involving economic development fall into this area. So there's a few things, like you'll see one of the bullets kind of towards the bottom middle here, attracting, retaining a hotel in central Inglewood. There are some things in here that have been impacted by COVID-19. This is one of them. Certainly, it's something that we're still interested in doing, but the hotel industry, as many industries have, has been in quite a, quite a challenging spot right now. And so some of these you'll see in the dashboard will know have been impacted by COVID-19. A few are recommending to modify a bit or to move out. But again, in here, we're really, we really see features of economic development and redevelopment. Infrastructure, obviously, this is something, I think actually Council rated this as their number one of the seven. This is obviously an area that is incredibly important to, to the city of Inglewood. I would say both to employees of the city, but also to community members. In this area, we really want to be proactive with how we handle infrastructure, but we also want to do it in a cost-effective way. And we really want to make sure that we're both maintaining, but also protecting, the infrastructure that we have here. So there are several things in here that relate to planning, so develop a, I'm not, maybe it's a planning we think of in community development, but kind of the long-range, kind of fiscal planning in terms of developing a, you know, capital improvement plan, 20-year plan for financing, making sure that we, you know, kind of obviously in response to what happened a few years ago, making sure that structures, reducing the number, the percentage that are at risk for flooding, making sure that we're educating the public about infrastructure needs. We do have a small metric in here related to pothole filling, so that's something we actually have. There's a dashboard of, actually, on the city's website, where you can see all the potholes that have been filled. There's a lot of exciting things actually happening in this area, if any of you watched last night at the council meeting. We've created kind of an internal working group on asset management. And so we're working really hard, whether it's assets that involve IT, assets in our parks, in our water park, in our golf course, assets in South Platte Renew, utilities, or public works. We're really working hard to kind of create a system that's able to capture those assets effectively, to monitor them, and really to integrate them as much as possible across departments. So this is definitely an area where the city's been doing quite a bit of work. Safety, obviously, this is an area that, having done this work now in three cities, I think safety is always one of, whatever they're called, you know, goals, wildly important areas, outcomes, safety is always, always on there. So we really want, in this area, a city that protects its people, infrastructure, and built environment. So what's kind of unique about this safety area is that certainly it does focus quite a bit on the policing aspect of safety, but it also, and to an extent, the fire inspection work that we do. But it really does focus also on the safety aspects of infrastructure and built environment. There's been a lot of work happening in this area related to policing aspect of it. You might have seen, I think it was two Mondays ago, there was a police reform task force that had a presentation to Council. Some of the things that they have been working on are included in here. There's also some work in here related to transportation safety. So we're working towards, there's a national program called Vision Zero that we've been exploring through Dr. Cog, the Regional Council of Governments, to better understand how we can minimize serious injuries and fatalities related to transportation. So it could be vehicular, cyclists, pedestrians. So obviously, there's an aspect of that that also ties into city planning. And again, there's a lot of work in here just related to community policing and policeman engagement. Sustainability is another really interesting area. So as I mentioned, one of the things that I've been working on since I started in Inglewood in early August has been kind of creating the, the structure to build a sustainability program. And when I say build, we actually really have a solid foundation. It's really more about how can we put together the things that we're already doing into a cohesive structure. So this is actually one of the largest areas of the strategic plan. There's a lot of great work that's already going on. On Monday, this coming Monday, the 23rd, I'll be presenting to the City Council about kind of asking them to adopt a definition of sustainability for the city of Inglewood, and then also asking them to kind of review the, the process that I've mapped out to basically create a proposal for a sustainability program. So the phase that we're in right now is asking Council to develop a definition or prove a definition of sustainability in the context of Inglewood. And then we also, over the last month or so, conducted a study, should call it a survey, really, where we asked city employees to basically identify programs that they're already running. So there's a few programs, like the E3 grant program in, in community development, and some others as well, that are, that have been run for years, that really do tie to our sustainability efforts. So we really want to spend some time this late fall and early winter, after the definition of sustainability has been crystallized, going through these, these programs that already exist and figuring how they fit into the larger sustainability picture, and then coming to Council in the spring with a proposal for a sustainability plan and potentially a sustainability program. And when I say a sustainability plan, I don't mean creating a brand-new strategic plan just around sustainability. I mean, how can we maybe look a little bit differently at this section and maybe organize some of these goals that we have maybe into some buckets, like, for example, sustainability involving water, involving the built environment, involving city-owned infrastructure, involving natural resources, and things, and, and things like recycling and trash, and things like that. So I think there's a lot of exciting things that will be coming down the pike in this area. There's two more. So transportation, this is also one of the areas that obviously touches your work in that of community development. So there are some goals in here that relate to mass transit. I believe there's something, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I believe there is, related to the Inglewood Trolley. Obviously, there have been challenges there related to COVID. There's also been some challenges related to this last bullet here, related to RTD ridership. There's also some safety aspects included in here. There's also some public works aspects. So some of the things in here do kind of overlap a bit with what I showed you earlier in safety. There's some things that we want to do here in terms of trying to improve travel times and safety in some of our main corridors. There's some work in here related to walkability and cycling in Inglewood. So there's a lot of interesting things in this section as well. And the last section is governance. So this one, as you may say, kind of, kind of could be the outlier in a way, in that the other six are more external-facing, whereas governance is more internal. Looking at, at this building, probably Greek, architecture building right here, part of a building, I really think of governance as the bottom part. I think of governance as the foundation for everything else that we do. So governance is a section in the strategic plan. However, of the seven sections, it's probably the least built-out one. And the reason for that is we really wanted to engage city employees in helping us really develop and think about this, this section. So Sean Lewis, the City Manager, and I conducted a series of focus groups with employees in the early fall. We also met with the leadership team, which is what we call the Department Director Group, that meets on a weekly basis. And basically, we, we started kind of developing this section out a bit more. We're calling it right now the Blueprint for Organizational Success, and the idea is that that will go live in January. And when it does, we'll integrate it into this, so it won't be its own separate plan. It'll be the foundational part of a strategic plan. That will be the governance. It'll be the foundational part of a strategic plan, um, that will be the governance section. So when you look at the dashboard next week, you'll see that probably this one's a little bit lighter. There are about 10 projects in here, but it is a little bit lighter than some of the others. And the reason for that is that we really wanted to engage city employees in helping us build that foundational aspect of it. Um, so before I, I open it up to questions, um, I just want to say two things. Uh, the first one is I've tried to kind of give, uh, you know, a high level of flavor of what's in the plan. Talk a little bit about how it'll be reported and how it'll be shared. Um, certainly I can answer some specific questions about projects in the plan. Uh, but one of the, the pieces of feedback that Nancy and Wade gave me before is really that in addition to me just sharing this information with you, um, that there really could potentially be ways for you as a commission to be engaged in the work of this plan. So I think maybe one way of doing that is we can either talk, um, during this session now, or maybe I could come back at a later one, or I could send you information about maybe some of the key projects that are in the plan that may be fit with some of the things that you're interested in working on. Um, and then maybe we could go from there, you know, in terms of figuring out, um, how you could potentially help, help with those. Um, certainly there will also be a council retreat in January, um, where council will be going through this plan again, um, and be making, uh, there may be some updates that they're making to it. So that will be another chance and opportunity for you to weigh in. So I would say there's really two ways to be involved. One is by weighing in, um, through this commission structure and through council about things that maybe should be in the plan, um, or ideas you have for the plan. And then another one is, um, to focus on some of the things that are already in the plan that you'd like to see accomplished, that you believe this commission can play a role in achieving. Um, then the last thing I'd like to say just really quickly is just to say thank you. Um, I know I've, I've put a lot out there, um, but I really do appreciate, I, I've been on, um, been on two commissions, three commissions, actually myself over the years and was a an elected member of my Board of Selectmen in Massachusetts, which is somewhat similar to a city council, but a little bit different. And so I really appreciate, um, you know, having been there myself. I really appreciate all the time that you put in, you know, after your, your day jobs and after your, your busy days into serving your community. And so I really appreciate that. And I appreciate you having me come and speak tonight.
Well, thank you very much, Tim. That's quite a bit of information to, uh, for us to digest. But are there, um, questions for many of you? Kate Townley.
Thanks. I guess I kind of have a comment more than a question. It's exciting to see, um, this plan and just, um, yeah, I'm happy to see a lot of the things that have been highlighted in here. Uh, I guess one comment would be, I could see how this could be really helpful in the spring or thinking about how we can use this in the springtime, uh, when we usually start thinking about our uh, list of capital improvement projects or prioritizing those and sort of how we can use this to, um, think about which projects we'd want to put to the top or how it might help us like score different projects and how those fit into the strategic plan. So just a comment.
Thank you, Kate. I don't see any other hands. Oh, here we go. Diane.
Hi, thanks, Tim. I'm really excited to hear about all the stuff you're working on. And I can share the Boston and California vibe, live both places as well. Um, I, I'm super interested in some of the things you mentioned, especially the sustainability, uh, components. Um, so I'm curious to hear, I don't know if you have that at your disposal right now, but I'm curious to hear the definition that you are asking, uh, council to adopt. Um, or if that's, if that's on the web, uh, can look it up, but definitely interested in hearing about that, but really excited to have you working on this.
Thank you. Yeah. And, um, I'm not always a master at sharing my screen, so I can't. I have a lot of, a lot of things open, so I might not be able to share it, but I actually do have that open, I believe. Um, and so I'm able to find it. Actually, I believe I might have closed it. Um, if you'd like, I can, um, I don't know if there's another question. I'm happy to come back to that, but I can actually, oh, I actually just found my file.
Isn't that the way it always is?
Yeah. I was working on it late last night, so I thought I still had it open, but I can't. Yes, so I'll just read it to you if that's okay. Um, so the working definition that we have right now is that sustainability is an approach to decision-making, planning and visioning that focuses on meeting the economic, environmental and social needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. So again, this hasn't been approved, um, by council. It's just a draft definition that we developed internally, um, based on the definition of the United Nations and then also looking at um, a few definitions that other cities have. Um, so as you may be aware, uh, Denver has a pretty robust sustainability program, um, as does Fort Collins, uh, Santa Monica, where I come from, did as well. Um, and so we kind of use those as examples. So do you have it up on the screen right now?
Uh, I see Daryl's hand up. Think you need to unmute, Daryl. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, okay, there you go. Um, I just, uh, had more of a comment than a question. I guess my, my question is, I guess, you know, what, what, I, what type of public process there is going to be going forward? I, I think you said you started this in September. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I, I started with the city in August. Um, and August and September is roughly when we started reporting on, on the strategic plan. Um, I don't know. So the strategic plan was adopted by council before I started. Um, I don't know if Brad is still on the call. I think he must have admitted it off, but, um, he might know the exact date, but the strategic plan was approved by council over the summer. Um, so there were, I believe there were a few, uh, there was at least one retreat and I think a study session or two that were held on, held related to it. Um, so kind of our public process going forward is, is twofold. One is publishing all of our performance data so that the public can interact with it and see it, contact the city council, city staff if they have questions about it. And then also working towards having an annual retreat, uh, which would give, um, the public an opportunity to weigh in. Um, cause every, every year at the retreat is when council will basically reflect on the work for that past year. Um, and they will be making probably some changes to it. Um, they'll be celebrating success and also maybe tweaking some aspects of it as well. So that really would be, would be the time and that's going to be coming up in January. I believe the tentative, uh, date is a Saturday is January 23rd. Thank you.
Colin. Uh, thank you also for the, uh, presentation there. Had a, um, question on the KPIs and how you guys, and maybe this is a loaded question that you haven't quite gotten through all the way. I know you mentioned that, um, those are kind of the hardest thing to quantify, right? Um, how are you going about, will there be individual KPIs for each one of these? And then will they be monetary or physical, I mean, some sort of, have you guys gotten to that point yet where you're starting to think through those metrics?
That's, yeah, so that's a great question. Um, and it's one I could probably present about for five hours, but I will, I will spare you that. Um, this is, yeah, it's been something I've, I've done quite a bit of work on, I really, really find fascinating. So the short answer is, um, we're really doing it. So we're doing them by department, but we're really, we're asking departments to identify what outcome area they tie to. So instead of doing one for every project or every goal in sustainability, we're just asking for them to say, okay, this ties to sustainability, this ties to infrastructure. Um, over time, we hope to get more specific. Um, but we just thought for kind of starting purposes, that made more sense to do it that way. Um, ICMA, which is the International City Management Association, does have 80 national benchmarks that a lot of cities use, um, as a starting point. So what we did is we basically provided those to departments as examples. And then also from past work I have done and research that I've done, I provided examples to, to departments as well. Uh, the general idea, the, the, so to speak, request uh, of departments was that they would have five KPIs per department. Um, I haven't seen all of them yet, so I don't know quite how they land in terms of which of the seven areas they tie to. Um, we, the model that we eventually want to get to is kind of a three level, three levels of metrics where internally we're tracking inputs, you know, so how mu, which accounting, how much we're doing. The KPI level, right, really are the outputs. They're telling us the efficiency and effectiveness. So we ran this program at the library. They're telling us how well we ran it. And then eventually mostly looking at the citizen survey, we want to try to develop outcome metrics that again will tie back into the area, the outcome areas like sustainability or infrastructure. Um, in terms of the return and investment, that's always something that's hard for government. Um, you know, certainly some of them are financial in nature. Um, but the way we're looking at them right now is really just in a, in a way, trying to define them as metrics that are telling us how well we're doing. So how well we're doing could say if we stand up this program, do we want people to come to it? The answer is yes. So are we increasing attendance, right, at certain events could be it. Um, if internally we're rolling out a new program, we want to make sure everyone in the city is trained on it. That could potentially be the metric. Um, a lot of them are, you know, how quickly we can respond to citizen requests. That's going to be one we look at. Um, how quickly we respond to query requests. Um, so they're really kind of, we're really just at the, the foundational stage of it. But just at a very high level, we're looking for metrics that are basically going to tell us not what we're doing, but basically how well we're doing.
Two really quick follow-ups on that. One, I'm really glad that you've done this in a bunch of other places before and are being able to implement that because I think that abstract thought on how do you measure these things is super important and um, I think you can get tied down into it. So it sounds like you've gone through that, which is great. And then I guess it sounds like initially these aren't going to be publicly, um, uh, facing. And then, so I guess what's the timeline? Do you think there's a timeline on that?
Yeah, there, there definitely is. So the, the, so starting off in 2021, uh, which is when we're going to start reporting on them, they will be internal. Um, we may make a decision at some point during the year to make them external, or maybe after the year. Um, so in 2022, um, we do as much as possible want to start raising some up into the strategic plan as soon as we can, um, which hopefully will be over the next year for some of them. But we also really, um, this is, you know, as, as I'm sure you can, you know, based on your questions, I'm sure this is something you've done before too. Um, you know, it does, the starting part is always hard. And so we really want to make sure that um, people feel comfortable with it before we kind of get to that point.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Other questions? Yes, Carl.
This is like a, uh, basically a project list that's, uh, has an end date of 2022. So, I mean, my home project list is never ending. And so as I cross that thing off, I add, as I cross one project off, I add two more. So if this is going to be like that, this is just continuing list that will never, it'll be part of Englewood forever and ever and ever. Is that, is that the, how they might deal with this or?
Yeah, so that's a sorry, sorry, sir.
What, what will they do in 2022? Wrapped us up to say, well, this, this, this is over with.
That's a really fantastic question. Um, in my past experience of doing strategic plans, some of them are more like this. And that, as you pointed out, they're project lists. Um, and some of them more are like what Colin mentioned in that they're more, um, measures of, okay, these are the programs that we run. We're going to report annually or biannually about how well we're doing them. Um, my goal certainly with the structure of the strategic plan is probably hopefully within the next year to have both of those. Um, if you look at the full strategic plan, which I'm happy to, to share, I think I may have, I apologize if I didn't. Um, there's def, there are definitely fewer projects scheduled for 2022 than there are for 2020. Um, but I think we really do want to get to a point where after we've done a lot of what I call the boots on the groundwork and we've implemented these programs, projects, excuse me, we're doing two things. Number one, we're celebrating success. So we're already very happy that 21% of these 75, 175 projects have already been completed. But number two, we want to then think about how we can measure them as programs. So no longer as, you know, beginning to end projects, but having measurements that are saying, okay, you know, we created this new program that was a project, but now how are we measuring how well we're doing it? So to answer your question, the long-term goal, as I see it, is that we will probably always have projects on the list, but that we want to get more towards having more measurements of ongoing programs than having probably 175 projects that were building from scratch.
So what, uh, you have a 175 projects and 21% are complete. What, what shows that they're complete and how do they determine that the, uh, project is completed?
Yeah, so every, every, uh, month, uh, the city manager and I meet with department directors who basically do report outs on each of the projects that tie to their department. Um, and then we go through those on a monthly basis and then we just, we just in it once for the first time. We basically review them and say, okay, has this been completed? So it, it varies depending on the project. Some of them involve a few departments. Um, if it's one department where it's one director is kind of overseeing it, um, usually that's through those meetings is how we can determine whether or not it's been completed. Um, and then the dashboard that you'll see, um, when we publish it next week. I'm also trying to see, yeah, I can show you kind of a snapshot. So this will be online next week and presented to council. Um, so yeah, so it'll basically show something like local economy. It will have the goal, it will have the projects, it will show the status. And then I'll also, and this is a draft form, um, so you'll see the final one next week, but this is just to show you. Um, but then notes kind of also provide an explanation. So this is again totally transparent to the public and not, not to put you on the spot, Brad, but as a department director who's gone through this, I didn't know if there was anything else you wanted to add about how we came to determining what the status of each project was.
And this will be the, uh, the dashboard will be available to public?
Yes, it'll be posted on the website. Um, and then it will also be presented to council on Monday and will be available um, on a quarterly basis.
How often is it upgraded?
Uh, right now, every quarter.
Quarter, my turn.
Yeah, so the quarter, you know, for example, the quarter ended, um, in October, the end of October. So the report will come the next month in November. So we're basically reporting, we're, we're, we're reporting out about three weeks after the work ended.
Brad, did you have something to say?
Well, I guess the only thing I would add is I think this has been really helpful for those of us who lead the departments and have um, responsibilities throughout this program. I think Tim hit it between the local economy and the neighborhoods, uh, we have our fair share of of projects in these and it's, it's good to get together with, um, Tim and the city manager on a regular basis to kind of compare notes and see where we are on it. So I found it helpful um, so far to actually help us track our own internal work plan um, for our department. And it's also, I think, helpful to see where um, those projects that overlap between departments, uh, how we're doing in terms of our internal coordination on some of those projects. So um, I would say the 2020 has obviously been eventful on a lot of fronts. But as it relates to our work plan for community development, um, I'm, I mean, I can, you know, this is pretty self-serving to say, but I'm really just pleased with the effort our staff has made um, this year to advance, um, pretty much every one of our, our projects, um, notwithstanding what's happening in the, in the wider world. And this has been helpful to help us do that.
Yes, to agree to Brad's point, I'm not looking at, um, you know, to see how many of them tied to his department, but many of these, 41 projects. Um, and so, you know, already eight have been completed and, and many are on track, uh, for completion.
Well, I think this certainly sounds like it's going to be something that's a, a great source of information and help not just the staff and, but to get everybody moving in the same direction. Staff, the citizens and the businesses and everything that's associated with Englewood. So this is great. Any other questions for Tim?
Yeah, I had, I had a one, something I want to follow up on. And Brad kind of touched on this. Yeah, obviously some of the goals are, are, um, not limited to one department. Uh, from, uh, actually that goal specifically, but, um, I was curious about some of the things that under transportation would, uh, uh, require RCD's involvement. I just wondered how, um, you know, when you, when you need to bring in outside, uh, things such as, such as that, how that, how that, uh, works. things such as, such as that, how that, how that works into the process.
Yeah, so that's a great question. So Brad, if it's okay, maybe I'll tee it up and maybe if you didn't mind, wouldn't mind maybe talking a little bit about the specific relationship with RTD. But so a few of these, I just showed you the page right now on the dashboard. We have them labeled as impacted by COVID. Obviously, there's a lot of uncertainty with regional transportation funding. So that's why they're labeled as such. But you bring up a great point, which is in my last job, a lot of the things that we had in our strategic plan, the city was one actor in. So, you know, just like in Inglewood, Santa Monica doesn't have a, there is a Santa Monica, Malibu school district, but it wasn't part of the city government. We had a whole section on learning. And so we basically were trying to figure out a way of how do we kind of measure the partnerships that we have with the local community college, with the school district, how do we engage outside partners? To me, a part of that is kind of, right now with a lot of these, we're kind of reporting the city's role in it or we're reporting kind of data that we're getting from an outside partner. But I kind of call it a strategic planning 2.0 or maybe 3.0 in terms of how this, you know, this would get to be more of a true community plan and would really kind of engage other partners in it. Doing that is definitely has some challenges. It's also very exciting. I would say we're at the very beginning of stages of that. So I would say the vast majority of things in here are are areas where the city is the main actor, if not the only actor. But there are a few like the RTD ones where we are not the only one playing a role. And so right now it's really, I think about how we can kind of monitor the relationship that we have. And also a lot of outside factors, specifically COVID-19 have impacted. So I don't know, Brad, if you had anything else to add to that.
Well, just to pick up on the last point, I mean, you can see the goal there, increased ridership, RTD transit options in, in Inglewood. We obviously want to engage with RTD on that outcome, but one of the things that as Tim alluded to, that COVID has in, has impacted is the fact that I think RTD is going to be a much different transit agency for a number of years going forward, based on what they've been through relative to the collapse of their ridership and their, their revenue stream. And so I think, you know, I'm hopeful that we can use that as an opportunity because we have obviously big plans that you're aware of around the city center area and how we relate to the transit stops for both the regional buses and the rail. And what are we trying to do to partner with RTD in different ways, maybe going forward? And we changed the paradigm around, is, is a 600 car parking lot necessary when there's 11 cars in there every day on average right now? And so what are we doing to try to set that table for the future? To maybe think about how we, how we do transit in partnership with RTD as it relates to Inglewood, maybe a little bit differently than we've done in the past. So even though we've been through this terrible experience, I'm hopeful and expecting that our partnership with RTD can really kind of be restarted and re refreshed in a way going forward, that we may be having some ideas that we can experiment a little bit more and try some things out that, that increase transit options in Inglewood that we maybe haven't thought of or that RTD maybe hasn't thought of. And we all get creative in trying to rebuild the capacity for transit as it at least relates to our community. So that's, that's why there's some, some red pluses there, which means, you know, we're kind of in a timeout right now of really making that work and really have an option. But as we start to climb, climb forward, I think engaging with RTD is, is hopefully a really good positive things that we can do in the future and differently.
Yeah, I would agree that it's a hard time to engage with them right now. Given the timeframe though, I was back, you know, in the spring or the summer, maybe you would help to engage with them?
Oh, absolutely. And I think one of the things that'll be a big driver, no pun intended, is the pace that we take the, the city center redevelopment because RTD has a crucial role in the outcome there. In terms of how we all partner, the city, RTD and our development partners. We all have to come to table eventually. We'll, we'll, we'll be working on that early in middle part of next year, of course.
Right. If you were successful in actually engaging a hotel there, that I, I think that would perk their interest just a little bit.
Well, thank you again, Tim and Brad and everybody who did so much hard work on this and will be looking forward to seeing what's up on dashboard and how projects continue in the future. According to my agenda, the next, the next item on the agenda is John with a staff report about the city center rezoning.
Good evening, Plains zoning commission members. First of all, I would just like to do a short little recap of our previous meeting on October 20th. Dan Perumba was the guest for, of honor for that evening. And Dan Perumba kind of went over the deal that the city has been working out with a potential deal with a number of different partners, including the city itself. Scanlon Kemper Bard, which is known as SKB, a port western United States developer, development firm out of Portland. And as well as L and R Partners, which is the special servicer for the former Winegarden Commercial Bondholders. Of course, as you know, the Winegarden property defaulted on their loans and the bondholders were left with the remaining property there. So anyway, the part, as the deal, what the deal entails is that L and R Partners representing the bondholders has agreed to sell off certain pieces of property that would be very beneficial to SKB, particularly on the west side of Inca, where the, where the main SKB redevelopments would occur. And in exchange for that, the city, for their cooperation in that, the city would then convert their ground lease on the south half of the Office Depot Harbor Freight property to a fee simple development interest. And then they would be able to, that would give them great value to go on the market to look for a residential property developer. And that would help to recoup a lot of their losses. So in what the city needs to be doing to facilitate this, one of the things is we need to get the entitlements in place for this to happen. And we're kind of under some time pressure with that, as, as you might well expect. L and R Partners would like to be able to start marketing their, that fee simple interest prop south half of that block beginning sometime in late spring. So, and so what we need to do is we need to be able to get some entitlements for that so that they can effectively market that and give development community some confidence to go forward and make that deal with them. And of course, SKB is wanting to get, they're still in the process of developing their plans as well. And we expect them to be able to finalize some of those plans here early next year as well. And so they are going to need rezoning as well too. So at this point, I think what we're going to do is I'll kind of restart the PowerPoint that I had from before. And we'll try to pick up from where we left off. And so if you just bear with me, I will attempt to share the screen here. I'll skip through Dan's slides that he showed last time. And so we'll, we'll start here. And so this is a picture of the city center site as it existed in the 1950s before the Cinderella City Mall came in. And this was basically the city's park. You can see a baseball field and so maybe some playgrounds and then some, just some large open space areas to the left. And at that point in time, this area was zoned as R1A. When the Cinderella City Mall deal was made, which was in the late 60s, the city Zen zoned in order to make that happen. The city zoned this area to B1, which was the same zoning as was existed to the east of Alatty Street in our central business district. When, when the city got hold of the Cinderella City Mall as it had, then, since then had died, the city then began to work on its redevelopment plan for the mall site. And at that time, the best, the thinking was is that a PUD process made the most sense. It was something that was already in our code. And it was a kind of negotiated zoning and it provided a lot of flexibility. And it worked very well. However, today we believe that we kind of thought about the PUD process and the PUD process really works well when you have a number of people who all are looking for something to gain. But when you have some players in the mix that already have what they want, namely Walmarts or the Art Walk Apartments, they may not be quite as motivated as they would normally be in a PUD process. And so we don't think the PUD, trying to do another PUD makes a lot of sense for where we are today. So in this slide, this kind of just shows you a little bit of the history that we've been in. So this, the blue parcels are the city controlled parcels and the red parcels are the L and R parcels as they control them today. As I reiterated earlier, we have, the city developed an RFQ, RFP process for the city owned and controlled portions of city center, which is basically the civic center and the park and ride to the north. And SKB was chosen as the city's partner for the redevelopment of these parcels. We've come to an agreement with SKB, the city and the L and R to work in a coordinated fashion. SKB would transferred about the, I guess it's now the 24 hour fitness, the Tokyo Joe's retail pad and the Piazza retail and the north half of the Office Depot Harbor Freight Block to SKB. And then L and R would be able to convert their lease on the south half of the Office Depot Harbor Freight Block to a fee simple interest for resale as a residential redevelopment opportunity. Of course, once again, we need to facilitate that, the city does. And so we need to do rezoning for the PUD to, and we've, we've figured out that probably the best thing is to go back to what it was, which was B1. Today, we call that MUB1 as a mixed use zone in our current code. And it would match the zoning to the east once again in our central business district. There was a number of different options that we did, we did explore. We did explore amending the existing PUD. But PUDs must be applied for by all the landowners in writing per the UDC. And we really didn't want to, we didn't think it was a good idea to include Art Walk or Walmart in this. The option two is to replace existing UPD through a city initiated base rezoning. Gives us more flexibility and control. And the, but the base zone districts that conceivably would qualify seemed to us to be the MUB1, the mixed use central business district, or the TSA, which is the transit station area. And we kind of compared those in our minds. And of course, as I reiterated, the MUB1 was the previous base zone district for Cinderella City. So that kind of is a plus there going back to what it was. The TSA zone district was intended to be used as a negotiated zone district. And it was added to the code in the 2000s and it was primarily aimed at light rail transit areas. However, it's never been used or applied for. And it seemed to us that it would really serve our, our city's interests better if we converted the TSA base zone district to a special overlay district. And this way we would have, we'd be able to get, provide some certain entitlements to, for the L and R property to go forward. Including certain things that would be really necessary to attract a developer, including minimum and maximum densities as well as a residential parking ratio. Yet we could also, at a later point, when they have a developer on board and they can begin to submit some real, real physical plans, we can still have some negotiating authority over that. And we can get, that way we can get the best product that we can from the city. So as I was, as part of our roadmap, we would like to combine UDC text amendments for the MUB1 with a concurrent base rezoning of the city center PUD to MUB1. And with a late, a negotiated overlay district process for their final design site plans from SKB and the L and R property developer to follow that at a later date. Text amendments and base rezoning will be processed as two separate cases scheduled in a concurrent fashion. And they will be primarily locking in residential density and parking ratios. Development variables not addressed, including commercial parking setbacks or design standards would be developed and negotiated between the city, SKB, L and R and tribal architects through a TSA special plan overlay. So we've actually took some effort to map this out in terms of a schedule. And you can see that we are there on the second date there, November 17th. We have slotted some additional study sessions. We believe probably at least two more. But there's also a third one there in late January if necessary. And then in February, we think we could be able to get rolling with public hearing publication and have a public hearing with PNZ on March 2nd. And then kick that over to city council to begin their, have it with their public hearing on April 5th and with final approval on May 3rd. And then following that, this is a little bit more tentative, depends on how SKB, how quickly they are able to finalize their plan. But this is kind of our best guess. We, once they have a final plan, then we would then want to adopt a TSA overlay for their project. Beginning, we believe probably in April 6th, probably have maybe three study sessions, maybe a fourth one if necessary. Public hearing with PNZ June 8th. And then kicking back over to city council, July 6th with a final reading on August 2nd. So as part of, we, we asked tribal architects to do an analysis of the MUB1 zone in relationship to some of the early plans that SKB has been developing. And they identified a number of potential areas that might need to be addressed in the MUB1 text amendments. And the first one that we would like to discuss is land uses, particularly hotel use. SKB is interested in the possibility of a hotel at the city center site. But a court, right now, today, MUB1 zoning does not permit hotels as allowed use, which is kind of strange. I went back and reviewed past Inglewood zoning codes. And this is really varied quite a bit over time. So in 1940, the, the only zone district that was allowed for hotels at that point was R3. And I believe that was, may have something to do with the Swedish hotel, hospital. Probably that's where they thought there might be more demand for hotels. In 1955, then they took it out of the R3 and put it in commercial districts, the C1 and C2 zone district, which were the predecessors of B1 and B2 zone districts. In 1963, it showed up again in In 1963, it showed up again in that R3B zone district. In 85, it was then again eliminated from there, from R3B. And then in 2004, somehow it got it taken out of the B1, and I don't know why. But, and later on, it was, it was also approved for I1 and TSA. And then later in 2009, when we created the M1 and M2, we were able to put hotel use back over there in that hospital area. So our recommendation, we don't see any real problem to adding hotel use in the MUB1 zone district. So our recommendation is to add all types of visitor accommodations, hotel, hotel extended stay and bed and breakfast as allowed uses in the MUB1 zone district. And so at this point, I'd like to invite all the commissioners to discuss that possibility.
Okay. Well, that's another big mouthful to try and digest. I think one of the questions I think most people are going to be asking right off the bat are what's going to happen to Office Depot and Harbor Freight?
So that's a good question. They are most likely going to be going away. I, I do not know if they will end up relocating the community or not. But that is basically the, the way that Eleanor would like to proceed. It gives them the most upside to recoup their losses from the foreclosure. If, if the city does not allow that though, and decides against that, they have told us and they will just sell it off as is.
Okay, so those two tenants are aware of it and are, are fine, basically.
I don't. John, if I, if I might interrupt, just for a moment. I, I, I think it's fair to say that those two tenants are not fully aware of it. And they are in discussions with Eleanor about the future of their leases. Eleanor has opened the discussion about an early termination or a potential relocation, et cetera. So I, I think they're aware that their future is in flux, but it's not, not certain that it could go one way or the other at this point. The, one of the things we talked about last time is if this deal, the framework agreement is not moved forward, probably Eleanor would extend those leases and the net result would be that that would essentially lock that site and, and most of the property, the former wine garden property into a situation where it would not be redeveloped for, you know, 10 or 15 years at a minimum.
Okay, well, that's very good to know. I'm glad you interrupted, Dan. Of course, this meeting is public and can be looked at by anybody, but that's very good to know.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay, I see Darrell's hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on, I was curious about the process of, you know, the possibility of a hotel, is that something that would involve, you know, hiring somebody to recruit to look for a hotel? I know there's the, you know, private organ, private agencies that do such things? Or would that be something done internally?
I'll think I'll let Dan address that.
Darrell, I, I just say that that's the, under our agreements with SKB, that's one of their responsibilities is to seek out hotel developer and operators. Of course, and I think we've talked a little bit about this in the past, they had some very, very active interest pre-COVID. And we were very excited about it. I mean, even in discussions about having two potential hotel operators at city center. And of course, COVID has really put great uncertainty into the hospitality industry. So we're going to ask them to keep a placeholder or two in the city center redevelopment plan, and that's probably the best we can do until we see how, you know, maybe how these vaccines work. So we could look, we could be seeing a recovery that's maybe, you know, potentially quicker than what we think.
I think most of us would like to get to 2021 as soon as possible.
That would be nice.
Other hands up, please. Oh, hi Diane, you've got your hand up. You're still muted, Diane.
There you go, there we go. I, thank you for sharing the update. I had two questions. One pertains to the kind of calendar that you laid out. I know that you were saying the text amendment and the zoning would sort of be a first pass and then the site plans come later. Are you anticipating SKB to submit all, like all those site plans together as a package, like a block plan? Or are they going to be kind of bits and pieces, like they'll submit this piece and then the residential piece and that sort of thing?
Dan, I'll defer to you on that one as well.
I actually don't know the definitive answer to that. I would, generally speaking, I guess I would expect that we will see that in a couple of pieces. Cause they have, they'll have a lot to work with and we would expect to bring that, those projects forward, you know, on a, on a phased basis. They could surprise us and bring a whole bunch of it in at one time, but I think we'll see it on, generally on a phased basis.
Thanks. And then my next question relates to the hotel, adding the hotel use. I noticed that you specified recommendation of standard hotel, extended stay and bed and breakfast. I'm curious, A, is there a distinction, I don't recall, is there a distinction in the code between those three different types? And B, what would be the benefit of the extended stay? It doesn't, to me, it doesn't sound like a kind of beneficial use to kind of activate what you're trying to do here.
Well, so the hotels extended stay, there are a lot of different types of hotel extended stay. There are some that are, obviously some that are thought of as catering to transient workers, maybe we, there are some kind of hotels like that over there on 285 and I believe it's federal. But there's also nicer extended stay hotels. There's this one that I've become very familiar with recently in the Highland, low high neighborhood called the Kama. And it is a, it is, it caters to higher end, a higher end clientele that wants to be in an area for a longer time period than typically a few days, that it might be up to a month. And it's a really nice hotel. I would, I would suggest checking out the Kama to see what that's all about. But, so I think there could be a place for an extended stay hotel. I know bigger cities, they're pretty common in places like New York or San Francisco. And they're not always associated with lower end. The bed and breakfast, that could, that doesn't necessarily have to be part of this. But at the same time, you know, looking at the code and, and bed and breakfasts are really geared towards a small or a kind of a residential home where some people have guests and they feed them breakfast in the morning. I don't think we really have a real, any kind of bed and breakfast in the city at this point that would make the classic definition. However, the MUB1 zone district does have some residential portions of it off Broadway. And it is close to the hospital, so I, I don't really feel personally that it would be a problem. But if the commission feels differently, we certainly could, could skip the bed and breakfast for the MUB1.
Diane, just one thing that occurs to my, to me is that with the extended stay is that there's, I mean, I would think there would be nice if there would be something like that close to Craig, especially where many families need a place to stay for a long-term rehabilitation state. But I understand your concerns as well.
No, yeah, that's an interesting point. I, I really was more thinking of it not specifically with regards to being high or low end, but more just if you're trying to make a really active space at the retail and everything, if you're, if you're doing an extended stay, you're probably maybe not going to be participating in that as much. But, I mean, you make a good point, Michelle, about the, about the hospitals.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I think the extended stay, you're, I could see your point there because they probably wouldn't be shopping so much at Walmart as a normal residence would. However, they may be frequenting restaurants more than a normal resident would.
Kate, I see your hand up. I'll get to you Colin, I saw that too. And Kate Fuller as well.
I just had, I had a couple of questions, and I guess some of this is thinking about how so much has been changing in the world and how, you know, we make changes to the zoning code and how can we do it in a way that still allows for some flexibility with so many unknowns? There's such a huge change in the way people are working, the amount people are not traveling to work anymore and how permanent that may be. And, you know, thinking about things like reducing residential parking requirements and things like that, like how, how can we think of it in a way that could potentially have some flexibility in it? Even though we're making some, potentially making some concrete decisions in the next six months. You know, as we're just emerging from, from this whole pandemic. And in that same vein, like with the ground floor commercial requirement, I know that was one of the things we had in. And then at one point in time, we said, let's take it out, but let's keep it for the core of downtown because it's so important to have that commercial aspect downtown. And we really hadn't seen any development yet over in the city, city, city center area. I understand the need for like being able to have that space be flexible, but also making sure though, that we have regulations in place or whatever it is to make sure that the, that ground floor area is still totally activated. So again, kind of like, how could we still maybe expand that in key areas? Or have some sort of flexibility in there so we know that, I guess it could be design requirements or things like that. But I would also hate to have a lot of dead space on, on the ground floor. And I thought I had one other thing too, can I look real quick, Michelle, before I?
Sure. Or do you want John to go ahead and start answering your first question?
Oh yeah, that's fine.
Okay, floor is yours. John, Dan?
Yeah, well, I think this approach that we are advocating seems to give us our best bet to give us the best of both worlds in terms of, you know, what can we, what can we agree to upfront? And get these ball rolling in the direction we want it to go, yet at the same time, don't give away the whole store. And yet, you know, and also being as flexible as we can as well. And I think what we can do, and so this process that we've kind of outlined, this base rezoning plus then later on, these overlays, is that I think that we can get to a point where there's certain basic things that we can say, yeah, we agree with that and we can grant you those rights. But we can still hold on to certain power over some of all, the, all the little details, all the design details. And we can still have power with that to make sure that we don't get something that is not up to the community's values or does not, does not give value to the city.
Dan, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I would just quickly add, we had, to John's point, I think we have the best of both worlds here because not only will we have the zoning controls, especially with the overlay of fine tuning, but we have these two big agreements that are envisioned, the framework agreement between the city and L and R and the master developer agreement between the city and SKB. And we're anticipating that those agreements will have, will address a lot of this accountability for creating, for activating the spaces, making them people places, not having first floor vacancy. And, you know, so we'll have a lot of, I think contractual leverage with these entities as well in combination with the zoning. And so that'll, that should be helpful.
Kate, did that answer your question? And do you have your second question ready?
I think that's it for me for now.
Okay, great. I believe Colin, oh, I'll get you in a minute. I think Colin raised his hand last time around. I'll get you Judy.
I guess, is the, the types of visitor accommodations the same as we have in the MUB2? Or are there any additional ones that we're proposing to MUB1 that isn't in any of the other locations?
So I believe that these three accommodations are, that there, that there's no other additional accommodations in the land use chart. And all three of these are allowed in the MUB2.
And just to maybe clarify how we're going through this, there's obviously a lot of staff recommendations from your list. We're just talking about the land use hotel right now, right? We're not getting into it. We're just going to kind of take these one at a time.
That was my intent.
Okay. And then last, I guess, since the rest of kind of the downtown core is the MUB1 right now, do you see any impact of allowing hotels in that area? I, I don't see anything that would be that. But have you guys thought about how that impact might affect the rest of the MUB1?
Yeah, once again, I, I don't think it's going to be any big deal. I think, and I think it makes sense to have, you know, so in downtown Denver, they have lots of hotels down there because that's where the people want, need to go for their business. And, you know, obviously Inglewood is a smaller place, but if you're coming to Inglewood for business, you know, you want to, I think you want to be in the central business core. You know, so I don't, I don't see it as being an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, Judy, you had your hand up previously.
I had a question about, you may not know the answer. Historically, we saw obviously that it's come on and off of this in these zone areas. And do we have any feel for why, what kind of pushback we might get when we put this out to the public? Why it was not something that people wanted? I mean, do we have any of that history? I'm just curious what kind of pushback we might expect from making this happen? Do we have any idea?
So.
I would just, I'll start off, John, on this one. You know, we've had an awful lot of public outreach and dialogue in the context of the downtown development authority effort, which, you know, we had split results in the recent election on that, but the public did vote to establish the DDA and allow it to collect and spend revenues. So, but we had a lot of discussion about catalytic projects with hotel in the central business district being one of those. And I, I would say consistently, every conversation we had, people almost unanimously agreed with the need for a hotel in our central business district. And so it, it receives strong support along with the idea that the, the DDA would be a facilitator to help, help attract a hotel developer and operator.
Anybody else want to raise their hand? Oh, go ahead, John, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Yeah, I, you know, I've been with the city since 2001. And, you know, I, and I don't really recall, you know, that's been a long time ago when that code went in and I really didn't have that much to do with it either. And, you know, we hired a firm to do it and it could be just as simple as they just made a mistake. I mean, that could be as simple as that. You know, the other thing that I kind of went through my mind is that, so, you know, it's, it's always been known that people in the community would like to have a better hotel than what actually the city. that people in the community would like to have a better hotel than what actually the city does currently have. The city currently does have what are known as motels in the MUB 2 that are very old and really aren't serving necessarily the use, the way they were intended to be used for. They're really being used as SROs, single room occupancies. And to a kind of a transient, but probably people who stay for a number of months, actually. And we've had a lot of issues code wise with those properties. And it may be something that people were associating those properties with something with what could go into downtown, even though that's not really, that seems very unlikely to me. But there could be a negative association with those existing MUB 2 properties. And the thinking might have been that we don't want them, those kinds of properties in MUB 1.
Judy, did that answer your question? Okay. I just wanted to clarify, we're not talking about the, the overlay of the TSA district at all right now, correct?
No, this is, these are reforms that we would need to make to the MUB 1.
Okay.
Text, so text.
I just wanted to double check because it seemed to me that down the road, if the TSA district is approved, there might be, you would have basically three developers against the city deciding what's going to happen there. And that's sort of a bit of a concern to me. But maybe I don't have a very good reason for seeing that, so. Okay, no comment. Okay, Carl, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Dan mentioned the DDA election and for the funding for the DDA, some of that, the 80 million, my understanding was it was going to parking structures for the hotels, or not hotels, but possibly hotels, but the, mostly apartments around the light rail station there. So without the funding, they, they, they have the authority to collect and spend money, but they don't have any funding. So what's going to happen with that?
Carl, that's a little bit off the topic of what we're doing right now. I'll go ahead and allow an answer from John or Dan, but I don't want to get bogged down into specifics of a parking garage right now.
Well, the parking garages are attached to the apartments that are, which is part of the whole project.
Okay, I just understood your question, sorry.
And the hotel.
Yeah, I, a quick answer on that is that the DDA TIF funding, as it relates to city center parking garages, they were anticipated to probably be just about maybe 20% of that total, 80 million. So it was just a fraction. And since then, SKB has actually downsized their shared parking garage plans for city center. And the other thing is, city council will be evaluating next steps on the DDA. I mean, on the TIF, that issue lost only by six votes. So there's a pretty good chance that that'll be taken back to the voters next year and with a little bit more education, probably pass.
Six, pardon my interruption, Dan, six votes out of how many?
Six out of, I think there were a total of about 175 voters on the DDA.
That makes sense.
Because it was a very, very limited number of voters downtown.
I just pulled it up. I think it's nine votes out of about 160.
Thanks, Colin. Any further comments? Hello, Kate. Yes, Kate Fuller, sorry.
I think that mine might be for the next slide that I had written down that I was going to ask about the residential buildings proposed at the Harbor Freight area. Is that for the next slide or can I ask this now? I was a little confused.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Sounds good. So I know, I think like a year and a half ago, we had that multifamily building get proposed across the street from where we're proposing residential buildings over here. So would we anticipate the same kind of pushback from that project across the street? But I kind of don't think so, but I was curious about that. That's one question. And then is the residential building that we have in mind, is that, like what style building is it? Is it a high rise, like as tall as the Chase building? Or is it going to be small and multiple buildings? Like what's the unit count looking like? And are we going to require ground retail type of businesses? Because I think all of those are good things to consider.
Okay, so I think you're referring to the multifamily residential project that was on the former sports authority site. Is that the project?
I think it's Jason Street.
Yeah, yeah. I live here, I live right near both of those. So I could walk to the spot that we're talking about adding apartments and the spot that was rejected. And to me, it's just as close to my house in the neighborhood. But I do think that if you cross Hampden, the sentiment changes. But I was curious if there's been any research or feedback.
We will have to find that out. Once, once we, once we have developed our game plan for going forward with these amendments, we will definitely have to have a neighborhood meeting on these things. So that is kind of yet to be seen. But however, we have had, SKB has had some community, community meetings already to just kind of, to tee up the whole idea of redevelopment city center. And so far, I think we've, we've not heard anything super negative about those plans. So it is, at the same time, I, you know, I'm, I'm sure we will, you know, not everyone will have the same opinion and we will have some other voices as well. And then let's see, the other questions you had, how many units? So we have, we have kind of put in a agreement, in a verbal agreement, that we're looking to allow, you know, that property, that south half of the Harbor Freight off depot block would have, we have an agreement that that'd be 350 plus or minus apartments. And I do not believe that we would be requiring ground reef floor retail with that. We're, we are going to, I think the, the retail portions, we will be focusing more heavily with the SKB on their properties, particularly along Inglewood Parkway. Dan, would you like to add anything to that?
I, I would just add, in our discussions with LNR, there's this whole idea that this, there's still a responsibility for their buyer on the southern half of that block C to provide activation. And we've had discussions ultimately about, you know, things like the museum of outdoor arts being in there. There's even discussion about where the public library ends up. So while it might not be traditional retail, there is definitely this idea that collectively we have to figure out how to activate first floor spaces, interior and exterior. So there, there'll be a lot of focus and accountability on that, but it may, it'll probably be something other than traditional retail.
Thank you, Dan. I partially asked, answered a question I was going to ask. Kate, you've had your hand up for quite a while and then I'll get to you, Colin.
Me?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Now that I've realized that we were on the hotel, I'm finally going back to that. So I apologize to make it too super confusing. I guess one thing I was just trying to figure out in my head, do you have a sense of, if they have an idea for a hotel, would they be considering that as its own, its own development, like a single use development, I guess? Or are they considering something that would be hotel within a larger, like within a building that also has residential units or something like that? Or do you have any kind of sense of that, or it's just up in the air?
I, I would say the general idea is a standalone hotel, but the idea is to have it fairly integrated into the redevelopment of the plaza area as part of the overall plan to really activate that space, that key space that's at the base of the, of the station. So the idea is that the hotel and some of those activation activities would really come together. But generally, to make the hotel more feasible, especially in the current market, it would need to be standalone.
Thank you.
Are you, are you done, Kate? Okay. Colin, didn't you have, yeah, you had some questions?
Just one more, one more question, one more statement, I guess. I guess I, I feel like it would be hard to have residential on that first floor against Hampden. I mean, I feel like that would be kind of a hard one. So hopefully we can get some sort of activation in there. And I think that's what you guys are saying. So that's great. Second is, are, what, what are you looking for from us on, in this process? Are we going to try to go through each one of these and say land use hotel? Are we going to add that? Yes, let's move on. Or do we try to want to go through all these and then say which ones we're adding and not adding through this process? Or is this still, I mean, we have a lot of these meetings scheduled. Obviously, we're going to have to take a lot of time to go through this. Just want to make sure we are giving you what you're expecting from us.
Thank you, Colin. And then I guess the, on top of Colin's question, John, is do we have other slides we need to approve tonight?
Well, I've developed this whole presentation in a way that before we ever got started, so that we could just take it as it came. We don't want to necessarily try to rush anyone through this. And so we have allotted enough time, we believe, to get through the material. And it, it's sort of like, we, we don't really know how fast you'll be able to go or not. But what we want to do is we'll, we'll get as far as we can within our allotted time. And then we will pick it up from where we left off at the next study session on December 8th. I, I kind of was hoping to keep the focus on one topic at a time, but, you know, I'm going to roll with it if it goes in other directions as well. Just one more thing, I forgot to, to answer the height question. So I will, I will just briefly try to do that. In the MUB 1 zone district, the maximum height is 100 feet. And I believe that is less than those bank towers. Those towers somehow got built a little bit taller than 100 feet, which is interesting. And we are not, we don't, we do not foresee 10-story buildings. We, we believe that this is going to be five or six stories tops.
So for, for perspective for me, because I'm kind of a visual person, are we asking for buildings that are no more than half of the height of those two bank buildings?
That's what we think, that's what we expect. Where I don't, and that'll be, I guess that could be a topic for discussion if we feel that we want to, to look at that existing 100-foot maximum height zone district. At this point, I don't think staff would recommend dealing with that. We, we think that probably, it probably works for us. You know, we do have these existing bank tower buildings that are actually even taller than that 100-foot height. And this is our central business district. So if you were to have tall buildings in Inglewood, this would be probably the place to have them. So, but if the commission does want to discuss that, I will certainly add that into the, into this PowerPoint for later discussion time as future study session here.
Okay, so I'm just trying to look at the clock and try to figure out where we're trying to go here tonight. Do, this slide that's up before us about the land uses for the hotel with your recommendation, do the commissioners feel comfortable to go ahead and vote on that? And I'm, if so, I'd be asking for a motion.
Excuse me, acting chair, Austin.
Yes, help me.
Yes, we cannot do votes in study session, but you can certainly, you can reach a consensus. So no formal voting.
Okay, all right. Well, Nancy, you just keep telling me what to do. I'll listen to you.
You're good. But yeah, you can certainly do a consensus, just.
Okay, Kate, did you have a question?
Sorry, I didn't know which Kate. I was just going to add that the Chase building is 141 feet tall, just for our reference.
Okay, thank you. So can I get maybe a show of hands of people who are feeling comfortable that we can, you know, move forward with our next study section on, and this, this particular issue is pretty much okay within everybody's mind? Okay, perfect. I think, I think I saw everybody. Okay. John, do you have, you know, the rest of your presentation. So is this a good time to stop and to move on with other business? Or should we try to sneak in one more short topic?
Well, let me just peek and see what's next here. No, I think this is another one of those that it's more complicated. And so maybe this is the point where we might want to stop.
Okay, great. Okay, well, thank you so much, both John and Dan and everybody behind you. This is a very complicated thing and I think every citizen of Inglewood has somewhat of an investment in this because we all go there to shop and do things like that. So anyway, the next thing, am I still on? The next thing I see is staff's choice.
I just have one quick update. Good evening, everybody. This is Wade. I wanted to let you know that the Swedish Medical Center right-of-way vacation that you all discussed a few weeks ago did pass. City council unanimously at first reading last evening, so that seems to be well on its way. And city council also held a public hearing last evening on the Kevin Phasing right-of-way vacation request that's on East Jefferson Avenue and South Grant. And so we will go to first reading of that case on December 7th. So I just wanted to provide those quick updates to you.
Great. Thank you, Wade. Anyone else on staff?
I just would like to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving, since we will not have a meeting before then.
Thank you, Nancy. And I think that we all have that very same sentiment. It's going to be a little different, for me at least, and probably most of us, but we'll just do what we have to do.
I just want to give a point of information, include people in about a, the first carless community being developed in the United States in Tempe, Arizona. It is called, by a company called Cul-de-sac. And so I would recommend, if you have any interest in finding out about that, to look up Cul-de-sac, Tempe, Arizona on the internet.
Is that title somewhat connected to you, the cul-de-sac, you've reached the end of it? So you can't go around and hurt more things with this driverless cars and all that sort of stuff?
I think it, I think their, their intent was to convey this idea of safety and no cars and
Okay, all right.
You chose that to call it, but.
Just, just curious. Okay, attorney's choice. Dugan, you're still here?
I, I am. I'm still here and I have nothing to, to report this evening, as usual.
Well, it sounds like we're staying out of trouble, which is good. Okay. Okay, commissioner's choice, and I'll just go around how I see things as Michael did. Diane?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Okay, Noel?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Great. Carl?
Nothing for me either.
Judy?
I just wanted a quick apology for missing the last meeting. It was a last minute family thing. So I want to apologize for that. And yeah, just wish everybody family thing, so I want to apologize for that, and yeah, just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Well, thank you, Judy, in spite of everything that's going on now, in 2020, I think you're, thank you for your apology, but we're good. Kate Townley?
Nothing for me.
All right, the next one's Dan, he doesn't count. Darrell?
Nothing for me as well.
Kate Fuller?
I just wanted to say to everyone here in the public, I don't know if you noticed, I was turning my video on, on and off, but I was putting eye drops in for Lasik, so thank you for your patience, I just, I done on Friday, but I can see everything perfectly, and then, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and because of 2020, we're not going to be, going to see our family for Thanksgiving, but it also reminded me that there might be some people even here that might need some help shopping, because I've heard things might, you know, close down in the next couple of weeks, so keep me in mind, if you need somebody to run to Costco or Target or anything, you have my email address, so I just wanted to put that out there, and yeah, happy holidays.
Thank you, Kate, that's a great service you're providing. Colin?
That's great, Kate, that would, if I can get that done this weekend, if you could help me out, let's chat, no, ditto to that, that's super awesome, and bringing up a really good point, if anybody needs anything, we're all here to support each other. Also, in that respect, I didn't, I missed why Chair Freemire is no longer Chair Freemire, I think I caught that he was moving, I just wanted to kind of reiterate, thanks for his efforts over the time that he's been here, that I've been here, obviously, he's been a big influence, and wish him, wish him well, and I didn't get to quite do that, so if he's watching this as reminiscent, good luck.
You know, if he's watching this, well, more, more power to him, he doesn't have much to do on Tuesday night, but that's okay, I mean, this is all important work. Colin, the long and short story, story is that he sold his house and he's moved to Castle Rock, he moved to Castle Rock last week. There you have it. Darren, did I call on you?
Yes, you did, I didn't have anything for tonight, but I do wish, if Mr. Freemire does watch this, like, you know, kudos to him for being a good chair, and good luck to Castle Rock and him, new resident.
Well, I'm sure we all wish him the best, and of course, I obviously wish everybody the best Thanksgiving, it is gonna be a little different for me, but with that, I will, Nancy, do we have any other work that we need to take care of this evening?
Whoops, sorry, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, then with that, I will adjourn the meeting and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.